Good morning. Welcome to the September 25th, 2017 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Lee Bogle will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Please bow with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you could bring us all here together, that we could conduct business for the county, and we ask that you watch over the decisions made here today in the discussion, that all of that would be found pleasing to you. Heavenly Father, we ask that you watch over our county leaders, our state leaders, and our national leaders in all the decisions that they have to make, that the country can come together and we can resolve any differences that we have going on at this time, that you'll watch over and guide each one of us in our actions and reactions to everything that's going on throughout the world. Dear Lord, we ask that you watch over our emergency responders, our military as they serve daily for us, and that you watch over and guide them in all that they do. In your Son Jesus Christ's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call a roll, please, Gail.
Hunter Allen, Jim Aberwater, Lee Bogle, David Jones, Mike Kush, Craig Lynch, Chip Pinion, Charlotte P., Pettis Reed, Mike Vought, Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Have a quorum.
Thank you, Gail. We need to approve the minutes of our September 11th meeting. Craig? Thank you. We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve the September 11th meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you. We have one item that has been deferred, and that item is 6D317-3032, Purple Tree Farms. We will not be addressing that item tonight. Under six new business, 6A waiver request, 6A117-4006, William and Casey Gurwick are requesting a waiver from the fire hydrant requirements for property located at 11285 South Greenwood Road. We have Danielle filling in for Doug today, who's up in New York at a training session. Danielle Gloner will be filling in. Danielle.
Thank you. 164012 is a request for a waiver for the property located at 11285 South Greenwood Road. They are seeking the waiver from the standard requiring a fire hydrant to be located within 1,000 feet of all subdivision lots. It's a five-acre parcel, and they're hoping to create one additional lot, but this area has, it's been verified by Consolidated Utility that a fire hydrant cannot be supported at this location. Since it's a two-lot subdivision, a residential sprinkler system will not be required, but they're just seeking the waiver from the fire hydrant.
We have a motion and a second to approve 17-4006. Any questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6B submitted for preliminary plan approval, 6B117-1016, The Estates of Harvest Woods, 35 residential lot on 33.11 acres, zoned RM, located off Blue Ridge Drive, Harvest Grove is the applicant. Danielle.
Thank you. Application 171016 is for the preliminary plan for the estates at Harvest Woods, Section 3, and this subdivision will be served by a step system. And we have identified a number of comments that still need addressing. The naming of the subdivision is one. We'd like to see all the areas corrected to reflect the Harvest Woods and not Estates of Harvest Woods. Also, Mike, did you have some comment?
Yes. Show any sinkholes, rock outcroppings, significant tree masses to be preserved. There appears to be a, looks like some sinkholes back here. We just need those protected with a sinkhole conservation area. Let's see, we need an overall drainage, stormwater concept plan. When looking at this, earlier sections of Harvest Grove right here, the water is trying to go to the southwest, the way the land's falling right here. These earlier sections did not have drainage easements, drainage improvements, anything through these lots, so we'll need to work with the design staff to make sure we're not increasing the runoff for the houses down here. The rest of this can be gathered into the road and in a ditch on this side and goes down to an existing detention pond a little bit farther to south almost to cut off road. But other than that, we can, we can work with the design team to make sure that we're not increasing the runoff for this section. I believe that was it. But other than that, the preliminary seems to be in good order. And it's in this section right here.
You said the other section did not have drainage easements.
Yes, sir. Well, it was, they're large lots. I wish they had put in a drainage ditch along the back and then piped it down, but there are already houses built in this section. I'll turn the aerials on so you can see the houses. And once you get, these are long lots, but they're, I guess in relation, narrow and you have large houses, so there's not an opportunity to cut a ditch or a swell between them, so I don't think it'll be a problem. What they'll have to do is to show me that they're not increasing the runoff to these houses when they, the existing houses down here on Beverly Randolph. So we can have them capture a large area and send it to, down Blue Ridge, to the detention pond to the south, and if we can reduce the area going to these lots, it can be a balancing act. It's, you know, so we're not increasing the runoff, but we'll need a detailed analysis when they bring in the construction plans. And that's just a heads up. It's nothing that'll impact this, this development. It's just saying, hey, y'all need to be aware of this, and you need to consider this in your design.
Staff's recommending approval?
Yes, sir.
Work that needs to be done?
Yes, sir.
It's this, this area for what they're calling the Estates of Harvest Woods, and what Danielle was saying is, the rest of these were Harvest Woods, Section 1, 2, and all that. Either call it Harvest Woods, whatever section it'll be in the, in the progression, or renumber the lots, start with one. You know, if it's going to be a new-named subdivision, start the lot numbering, because right now they've got the, the lot numbers carry on from the earlier sections. See here, Section 2, Phase 2 down here, and then they just carry on with the lot numbering from that. So if it's going to be considered part of this development, which is same developer, I think these are just larger lots, and it's more of a marketing thing than anything, just to call them the Estates at Harvest Woods.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff's comments being addressed on the final construction plans.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Estates at Harvest Woods, Item 17-1016. Other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? The motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B2, Valley Farms, 17-1017, 181 residential lots and two common area lots on 43.9 acres, zoned PUD, located off Dunbar, Dunbar Lane, Thoroughbred Construction is the applicant. Danielle.
Thank you. Application 171017 filed by Valley Farms involves the PUD zoned property off of Dunbar Lane. They are seeking approval for 181 lots on 43.93 acres, and this is the preliminary plan. This was, you're probably familiar with this because the zoning amendment was recently approved, and the preliminary plan is submitted only for Section 1, but preliminary plans are required to show the entire development, so that was revised to address that item, and staff has reviewed the preliminary plan. We still are needing a few things to be addressed. The overall meets and bounds description of the property needs to be shown, and Mike, the sinkholes.
There's just, we ask that they show, we ask that they show any significant rock outcroppings, sinkholes, tree masses to be preserved. They are preserving trees along, what's the, oh goodness, Buchanan Estates, sorry. They are preserving the trees along Buchanan Estates, Fenceroe. They've moved the ditch to the south a little bit to help preserve theirs, but there appears to be, from the topography, there appears to be, might be a sinkhole in this area. We just ask that they investigate that. I think I can zoom in and show you a little bit better. And it's something we can address on the construction plans, but we just wanted to be aware of that as well. These appear to be, and it appears to be an enclosed contour right here, so we just need to make sure that we're addressing that in our design. And maybe one right here, too.
And since this plan unit development will be served by city sewer, it will require approval from the Murfreesboro Planning Commission, but we recommend approval.
You can see the city sewer in the, in the street here, and they'll extend that, zip over to, they'll extend it from this side and then bring it in. This'll be Phase 1 right here, and then they show the other phases, Phase 2 here, 3 and 4 back in here. Yes, sir. They've got a large detention pond right here, and it's all appears to be draining this way that can serve the entire subdivision, and then there's a Buzzard Branch Creek that runs through here. They are providing that little stream buffer along here, but the preliminary designs I've seen are showing a large pond in this area, so it should be adequate to meet our stormwater requirements.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I don't ever recall approving a PUD of this size without the pattern book. Am I overlooking that, or do we not have a pattern book?
Yes, it was called Beard Estates originally, and it, it was approved. We did approve it, I guess, several months ago. They changed the name, yeah.
It was approved, and then additional properties were added because there was a condition that it could not be developed until the second access. They were limited to a certain number of lots, and they required additional properties. The amendment came through a couple months ago, so.
Is that what you were talking about, the side setbacks? Yeah, they've, they've adjusted the side setbacks to have at least 15 feet between building envelopes.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff comments being addressed.
I have a motion and a second to approve Valley Farms 17-1017. Other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6C submitted for final plat approval, 6C117-2050, Tiny Town Subdivision, five lots on 6.76 acres, zoned RM, located off Rooker Road. Don Bruce is the applicant. This includes dedication of right-of-way and waiver to the fire hydrant requirements. Danielle.
Thank you. 172050 Tiny Town is requesting approval for five lots on 6.76 acres, the property's on RM. The plat was originally submitted as two lots, but it, the applicant has indicated that it was their desire to also further subdivide the property, so we ask the applicant to revise the plat to reflect their long-term intentions. We have been notified by Consolidated Utility that this area can support the additional installation of a fire hydrant, so they will not be requesting a fire hydrant waiver today since one can be installed. We'll request that the applicant and show that on the plat once they've had an opportunity to get with CUD and coordinate the location of that new installation. We still have some remaining comments that are, that we will need some additional work with, with the applicant. This has been in the process for a couple months. It was deferred from last month. First, obviously, the fire hydrant. We'll need to see the additional location of the fire hydrant. We're going to ask for some, the plat, and it's, the form that was submitted had varying colors, and it would make viewing the plat and understanding what was being called out difficult, so we're going to get with the applicant to modify that, and let's see.
A lot of it's just housekeeping stuff, just legibility of it. You can see on the screen, we've had some, the surveyor's had some issues with his plotter and just the text size, the legibility of it. We think he's addressing most everything, he just needs to clean it up a little bit.
There are some issues that are unresolved. Does staff have a recommendation at this time?
We believe that we can address these items with the applicant, and we do recommend approval.
They will be, for stormwater, they will have rain gardens. Each lot will require a individual lot grading plan so we can offset the stormwater, so we'll address that. Each, each lot will submit a grading plan to our department for review.
So a motion to approve should be made with addressing all staff comments and removing the waiver for fire hydrant, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. I have a motion and a second to approve Item 17-2050 Tiny Town Subdivision. All staff comments and a removal of the fire hydrant requirement, waiver, I'm sorry. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? The motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6C2, Terry Wilson, 17-2068, three lots on 3.4 acres, zoned RM, located off Old Lebanon Pike. Terry Wilson is the applicant. Danielle.
Thank you. Application 172068, requesting three lots on 3.4 acres and on an RM zone property. This property is located off Old Lebanon Pike. It is adjacent to the Murfreesboro city limits. We have been in discussions with the applicant regarding its proximity and ability to tap into the city sewer. However, the city will not be requiring the applicant to tap into the sewer, and the applicant has shown the soil sites, or that's, we are seeking, the applicant has had the scientists go out to the sites to identify the soil sites. It's yet to be shown on the submittal, but this, we will require that before we can approve the plat. We have checked with the state, and the state indicates that if sewer is available, the applicant will be required, but the city has provided us with a letter indicating that it will not require the applicant to tap into the sewer, so we are recommending approval. We had very little comments on this, and the applicant had responded to all of the comments made by staff.
I hear you do not have a soil site at this point?
The applicant has identified the soil sites on the property. We've been working with the applicant on this particular one, and their surveyor failed to show the soil sites on the revised plat, and as you see on your tablet right there. If you can pull up the map that shows the soil layers.
Yeah, they've got a lot of good soil on here.
And they're fully aware, they've marked it. It was just a failure of their surveyor to show that, obviously, it cannot be signed off until the state approves the soil sites, so.
Yeah, they got a lot of Cumberland soil, some Bradieville up front, but it's all showing suitable soil on the map.
And it's their desire to utilize septic systems and lower the sewer.
Sewer's out front, though. It's right there.
And, let's see.
That green line is the sewer, but they want, they will stay in the county and do three parcels. The yellow hatching is city, city of Murfreesboro. This is the VA golf course for reference, just across the street. And this is Black Cat Cave, right here in between Lebanon and Old Lebanon dirt road.
Make sure I understand what we're talking about on this sewer. So state law says if there's sewer available, then they have to hook up to it, then?
That was what we were told by the state employee.
So therefore, since sewer appears to be available, but they have to be annexed, then this is going to be a city issue and not a county issue?
They can force them to be annexed. That's new to the judge.
But, but the city requirements say that in order to attach to the sewer, you have to be, you have to be in the city.
It's right. Or is it catch 22? Had to be in the city limits to hook onto sewer, and, but the city won't force you to come into the city.
State law precedes, or state law takes priority over county and cities, so I'm not sure that this is even going to be in our jurisdiction.
I think the catch here is that in order to, for them to have city sewer available, they have to be in the city. So since they're not in the city and they can't be forced to be annexed into the city, then that, that premise that if you have city sewer available, you have to hook up would not apply because it's actually not available because they're not in the city. So they are where they are at this point, which shows it's still a county subdivision, and you can approve it with septic sites.
I suppose I can, I can perhaps understand that argument, but playing the devil's advocate, I could say that it is available, you're just choosing not to use it, basically.
I don't think, my understand, I don't, I won't say that I know all of the city requirements, but my understanding from past experience is that the city will not hook you onto the sewer unless you have been annexed, which would mean that it actually isn't available from the city's perspective. In other words, this landowner could not force the city to put them on there, on the, on the sewer, so it's not available from that perspective.
The city used to allow outside the city.
I think it's available kind of in the ordinary sense of things, but in the technical sense, I don't think it is. They can't, they won't put them on it.
Right. They've changed their laws, or their rules. They used to allow outside the city customers, like Buchanan Estates, and if it was under a previously approved agreement, you could hook onto the sewer. That's how Valley Farms is going to hook onto the sewer, because that area was previously approved, and it's in a sewer assessment district, and it's grandfathered in. But any new development has to be inside the city of Murfreesboro to hook on the sewer.
And they're contiguous versus Buchanan Estates?
Right. Yeah, Buchanan Estates is so remote from the city limits, yeah, I don't know if they could, they could probably conceivably go down the interstate and go over, but that would be quite a feat to see.
Mike, do we have something in the file from the city that says that they will not provide sewer service?
We do. We were provided with that last week, and I don't know if we have it, we don't physically have it here.
It might be in the file.
There is, yes.
Outside of that, which I understand, you know, what you're saying, but outside of that, are you good with anything else as far as?
Like I said, the lots, they'll, they'll need to do rain gardens and individual lot grading plans to offset the stormwater requirements, but it shouldn't be much of an impact with just three lots. You've got one existing house, it's not going to increase any additional runoff for that, but the two additional lots would require it.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments, and also making sure that this other situation is the way it needs to be.
I have a motion and a second to approve Item 17-2068 for Terry Wilson. Other comments or questions?
Chip, can we just clarify your motion that that, whatever else, that last part, is that we need written documentation from the city stating that sewer is not available?
That's correct.
Other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve Item 17-2068, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. We have one late item that needs to be added to our agenda under final plat approval, and that's 17-2003 for Singleton Park, and I'll need a motion to suspend the rules to add that.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules to add Item 17-2003.
All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. So this would make it Item 6C3, Singleton Park, 17-2003, 25 lots, 24 are buildable on 20 acres, zoned RM, located along Dilton-Mankin Road. Matthew Bartlett is the applicant. Danielle.
I'll take this one. This was previously approved as a final plat. Construction is nearly completed. It's all in good order, just the final plat has expired six months ago, and they need a reappraisal to carry on.
No changes?
No changes, no changes. Conventional septic system, yes, sir, and they do have a stormwater detention pond right off of Dilton-Mankin after Elrose that goes north. Good-looking piece of property.
You knew my next question.
What's that?
I said you knew my next question, because my next question was, is there drains?
Yes, sir. Right. We've got, as built back, and we've got a stormwater detention pond on Lot 25 to offset the additional runoff and increasing the pervert areas.
25, it is a detention pond.
Yes, sir. It's a common area, but it is where the detention pond's located.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve Singleton Park, 17-2003. Other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Items- Item 6D submitted for site plan approval, 17-3029 Verizon Wireless Antique Site. New construction of 190-foot communication tower, including a lightning rod, with accessory structures, equipment shelter on 15.69 acres, zoned RM, located along Rocky Fork, Amityville Road. Baker Donaldson on behalf of Verizon Wireless is the applicant. You got all that? Danielle.
Thank you. Application 173029 involves the 190-foot communications tower that is planned for the site along Rocky Fork, Amityville Road. They received border zoning appeals approval back in August for the tower, and at that time, they demonstrated meeting all the requirements for communication towers. However, we have just a couple items that are still outstanding, just minor notes that we'd like to see added to the plat, and we are recommending approval.
I wanted to add that we are now requiring a road connection performance agreement to any cell tower because of the heavy truck traffic coming in and out. There is an existing driveway, but we thought just better protect Rocky Fork, Amityville Road, from big trucks, concrete trucks, equipment going in and out, so that'll help protect Rocky Fork right here at the entrance. I wanted to add roaming charges and overage fees, but they doubled them.
Thank you, Chip. Have a motion to approve and a second. Thank you. Other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve Item 17-3029, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. 6D2, 17-3033 Verizon Wireless, 7461 Miller Johnson Road. New construction of 185-foot communication tower, including a lightning rod with accessory structures and equipment shelters on 139 acres, zoned RM, located along Miller Johnson and Woodfin Road. Falk and Foster on behalf of Verizon Wireless is the applicant, uh, sorry, Danielle.
Thank you. 173030 filed by Verizon Wireless is a 185-foot communications tower. This tower was also approved at the August 9 border zoning appeals meeting, and they have demonstrated meeting all of the requirements for communications towers. We also have a third-party reviewer review the application against our regulations. We do have several comments that we would like to address. We want additional notes to indicate the date of the hearing that they were approved. We want to see the location of the nearest hydrant. And they had actually turned off a layer from their plans that showed the additional colocations, which is a requirement of our cell tower ordinance, that every tower that submitted shows at least the ability to accommodate three additional antennas for colocation opportunities. And that was not reflected on sheet, C12, and we've asked the applicant to revise that. Apart from those, we recommend approval.
Mike, how much lighting on this size tower? These are shorter towers, right, than the first ones that we were accustomed to?
No, no lighting is required for towers under 200 feet.
Okay, under 200 feet, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Craig. Have a motion and a second to approve Item 17-3033. Other questions?
139 acres is a lot of acreage for a cell tower.
Well, they're only leasing 100 by 100 feet, and then it's 75 by 75, the actual fenced-in area. So it's not the entire acreage that's approved for a cell tower location. It's the, the small area that's identified on the larger parent tract.
Other questions?
I have access off of Woodfin Road, but this, this yellow parcel is the whole parent tract, like Danielle was saying, but they're only putting the tower right in this area right here.
Just a small lease area.
Other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve Item 17-3033, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6D3 has been deferred. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, October the 9th, 6:00 p.m., in this room at the courthouse. Any other business to become, to come before this planning commission? Thank you for your attendance and your participation. We are adjourned.